The difference with the mics is you might have to speak a little bit closer into them.
Hello?
There you go.
It sounds like they're hearing everything I'm making.
We're gonna eventually get a new system.
Okay, let's get started with the Pledge of Allegiance, everyone.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just some quick emergency evacuation procedures. If there is an emergency, there are exits in the back of the building and the side of the building. If something should come up, we will let you know and evacuate you safely. First approval I have is the Board of Education meeting minutes from March 12th. If I can get a motion to approve.
Motion.
Jen, in a second.
Second.
Barry, all in favor? I think that's everybody.
I guess we've already gone into public session, right? Because normally we do that.
Oh, right. We're not having any, Zach.
No, public session. I think a motion to go into public.
Rewind that. Could I get a motion to go into public session?
I'll do that, Tommy.
Bill, in a second. You're staying. All in favor? That is everyone. In case of emergency. Okay, so going back to the approval. Board of Education meeting minutes from March 12th of 2018. If I can get a motion to approve.
Motion.
Barry and Jen as the second, all in favor. That's everybody. Takes us to our first public commentary. If anybody would like to come to the mic, you may do so now.
You can.
Thanks, Jane.
So you might want to give us a weather question.
Thank you.
We're not closing on Wednesday.
It's been the mantra.
I heard it's gonna be a blizzard.
I want a little shout out to the University of Buffalo basketball team.
I'm there. Let's shout them out. Just, I know there's not much of a crowd here tonight, but just as an update to the events of today, first of all, I'd like to commend our buildings and ground staff for just being there every step of the way, particularly George. Billy Wright and Tommy Ellis did a fantastic job today in terms of just helping us manage a somewhat challenging situation. I will share that I was in the building, actually in the Heritage Room, at about 12:30, and I did not have my phone in the holster, as Mrs. Ackerman was feverishly trying to communicate with me. And I did hear the announcement that the building was going, actually to go into a shelter-in-place. At this time, we really didn't know what was happening. At that point, I was running toward the front of the building and met Gamal somewhere along the way. In short, was told that there was a person unresponsive behind the bleachers by the fence, I guess we'll call it, defund the building by Oakwood Road. Got a little bit more information, actually went back to my office at that point to get my phone and also place the initial robo-call, which just suggested that the building at that point had gone into lockdown. I had...
It was lockout, right?
I'm sorry, not lockdown, thank you very much. Not lockdown, lockout. It had gone into lockout, just to make sure that, basically, whatever police activity were taking place outside could not be interfered with. The kids were going through it their regular day, but within the building, nobody in the building, nobody out of the building, nobody onto the campus, nobody off the campus. We had repositioned security guards just to make sure that that was, in fact, the case. Placed the initial robo-call, indicating the lockout, that there was activity taking place. We did not, and we actually knew at that point that there was no immediate threat to students or staff. Came back, I actually stood outside myself, George, Tom, Billy, Brendan, Gamal came out for a while, while the investigation was taking place. Just a very unfortunate incident and scenario in general. The police were very professional. They got the work done relatively quickly and we were able to lift the lockout so dismissal could take place as scheduled.
Was the shelter-in-place long?
The shelter-in-place wasn't long. As soon as they realized that it was not an immediate threat or any sort of threat in any way, shape, or form, they went to a lockout. And like I said, a lockout is sealing the building. We did not want people coming into or out of, or really onto or leaving the campus itself.
And the shelter-in-place didn't cross like a passing time, so it was just...
The kids actually were, it was very close to a passing time, they had to go back into the classroom that they were in previously.
Yeah, I can say from personal experience, my son Will usually has special attendance. He can leave early and actually ended up staying put for the rest of the school day until the regular dismissal. So they caught those kids before they got out, you know, they made sure, as a poor choice of words, they made sure that no kids were leaving the building when they shouldn't have been during the lockout.
Right, no, I just meant did they have to stay in a classroom?
Oh, in the classroom.
They did for a very short period of time. Once the message came back that it was no, there was no immediate danger, there was no danger at all to anybody involved, again, we wanted the police to be able to do their job without any interference whatsoever. We didn't want to stop dismissal, but at least we ended the school day.
Jim, I'm just curious, I mean, I know you can't, I'm just wondering, who found out that this had occurred? Like, was it a student, please?
No, no.
Okay. So somebody in Buildings and Grounds was out on the...
One of our buildings and ground staff members was circulating and doing his regular routine and came across it and actually contacted George. Contacted Kathy, who contacted me, and it went from there.
It's horrific, I'm very sorry for him.
That's a horrible thing to have to find.
It is.
Moving on to the topic of the evening, the Building Improvement Capital Reserve Fund revisit.
Are you doing it?
Yeah, I'm gonna do it, I'm just...
Oh, okay, I'm just, I should be moving or not?
Maybe we need this, I can do it right, I appreciate it.
I just got into the meeting.
So this is actually a modified version of last week's presentation, and this is one of those things where after the meeting, something hit me, we started a conversation, realized that this conversation is going beyond where it should be going electronically and that this has to be a public discussion. And I think what hit me the hardest during our last discussion of what should be included in the capital proposition was, well, it was a couple of things, but first and foremost, the cost of the roof in last year's proposition for Washington at about 1.25 or almost 1.3 million, and then looking at this year's proposition with Flower Hill's roof included at 1.56 million. That's a significant difference, and my concern is, if we hold off on some of these projects, prices will go up, we will be dealing, we'll be dealing with this for years and possibly price ourselves out of a number of projects, and we're also giving up a degree of building aid on projects that could be done a little bit sooner, and we also know that there's a wait time from approval to project actually implementation. So, am I not on here? No.
Jim, does that, do those two buildings, or maybe George, do those two buildings have the same square footage or roof size? Did it, right?
Why is this not working?
When you say those two, you mean?
The two that we're talking about with the price difference.
Right, it doesn't, it's not a difference in square footage, it's just a difference in when the estimate was given, in other words, is why you're trying. I was wondering the exact same thing, Tom.
What's that? I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
The price for Jefferson and Southdown is different on the left.
The price for Jefferson and Southdown is different, first of all, you have two different, it's the one building that doesn't look like the others, and some of the preliminary work at Jefferson has already been done, so take the shape of the roof, some of the advanced work that's been done, you're talking about about a $60,000 difference. Okay?
Jen, was that not your question? You look like that was not your question.
Because I think I have the...
Kathy, can you just advance the slide manually for the time being, please?
I was just trying to discern whether the price difference between the two buildings was entirely due to...
No, back.
The difference in the time, or the estimate, or the difference in square footage.
No, it's the difference in square footage and the fact that some preliminary work at Jefferson has already been completed. So what you're looking at here, what you're looking at here is what was approved, this is actually in the capital proposition as of today. So this is the 2.786 million that the board approved last week for inclusion. Quick refresher, it includes the Flower Hill roof, security vestibule, Jefferson tile replacement, that's three faculty, two student bathrooms, the Washington security vestibule, those are the last two that need to be approved to complete the approval process, obviously there needs to be some installations, the Woodhall boilers, the bathroom tile replacement in the 12 classroom bathrooms in Woodhall, and the two roll-up doors at Huntington, at Huntington High School. Some other things that I'd like to offer to the board for further consideration, we talked about the LGI room at Finley, tile and seat replacement, if it was just the tile, and the abatement there would be about $100,000, as was mentioned last week, but when those tiles are removed, the seats are gonna crumble. To do that room right, we're estimating about $600,000. We also talked about the parking lot in Curbs at Woodhall, just over 700, and I'm also putting on the list for consideration two additional roofs. So again, it depends on how far the board wants to go here, but this money is sitting in reserve funds, it is not available for use for any other purpose, it is not as if we're not going to be able to check these projects off the list if we do it more sooner than later. It just seems to be a time where a lot of things need to be replaced and a time where it may be prudent to consider a little bit more than we considered last week. We talked about the STEM water booster system, as indicated last week, George and staff believe they can do that in-house for much less than the estimate from the architects, and we're certainly gonna rely on them to do that, but really what I'm doing now is opening this up for further board consideration.
And I had one thing that I thought about afterwards also, and it's small compared to all this other stuff, but the, when you had started the sidewalk along the high school parking lot and you had said maybe we'd be able to continue it a little bit further to the walkway, is that something that could be considered? Yeah, it would be in-house, but is it possible to consider that?
That wouldn't be added to this list.
And what, and would we...
No, this is purely from the capital reserves. If it's an in-house project, it would come from available general fund monies.
Okay.
Well, I put in here as well, just very quickly, the funds in, funds out slide, this is no different than last week, I figured it may be, again, useful to have that available for viewing tonight, and the balances in the three building improvement funds, and also recall last week, we spoke about creating a 2018 Building Improvement Fund for the purpose of transferring, primarily for transferring the money from the repair reserve, which was designated for a purpose that it's really not designed for, and it is a perfectly acceptable audit practice to move that money from the repair reserve to a building improvement fund. And creating a new fund would allow us to incorporate additional uses as well as the repair reserve as a source of funding. That is not listed in the 2017 proposition, or we wouldn't need that '18 fund.
But we did approve that already, right? The new...
Yes.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not an issue.
We'll talk about that, okay.
Just bringing it all back to light here in terms of the three propositions.
Right, right, I just wanted to make sure.
So, three propositions are outlined right here, Proposition 2 is generic in nature, it's not indicating exactly what was included, and that brings us back to the slide we started, this is where we left last week.
So, Jim, we have about 8.3 million in reserves right now, right? If we, for whatever reason, decided that we wanted to do all of these projects, my calculations come to about 7.1 million in projects, leaving us with about 1.1 million balance. Is that a comfortable level overall, or is that just something that we say, yeah, just get it all done and...
Should we have a table motion in second and then the most...
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, it's on the table, so...
Why don't you go through, I think, before we start contemplating the initial, the individual issues and talk about, again, educate us on the relative urgencies of each of those items, okay?
All right, in terms of urgency, I think we discussed last week, we could get away with a year, maybe two years, without the things that are on this additional, other items for discussion list. As I gave that thought to the price of the Washington roof versus the Flower Hill roof, that's what prompted me to re-initiate the conversation and suggest tonight's gathering. Could we get away with another year or two? Yes. But again, my concerns are, prices continue to go up, buildings aren't getting any younger, and again, each time we approve, or the voters approve, building work to be done, we have an aid ratio of about 38% or so, this is building aid that we will get back, it's general fund monies, this is aid that we would be foregoing during that given year. Urgency, it's, we're coming close to being in a place where we have to do these projects. Again, could we wait a year? Could we wait two years? By waiting a year or two years, we're actually waiting three or four years, because there is a wait time here.
But we might be waiting a year or two years anyway, right?
That's correct.
Because of how long it takes. So it's not money that's all going to be depleted at once.
Right, I was gonna say that, to speak to Tom's point, while the total cost may bring down the reserves to a low point, it's not as if we'll be, you know, spending 7 point whatever million dollars all in one fell swoop, it's gonna, based on...
We will have committed it. We will have committed it, but that's what that money is there for.
Right, but it's not gonna leave the account all at once.
And...
But that doesn't matter, you can't spend anything else.
No, no, I understand, but what we're saying is, it's the effect of seeing the $7 million get spent all upfront in one...
If, if there is a concern here, and...
What I understand is, it's gonna be on projects that are gonna stretch out two and three years. In other words, not like, oh, we're gonna wrap it all up in a year and it'll be done and that money will be gone. We're gonna be using, the money is allotted, but it's gonna be, it's gonna take years to get those projects.
Yeah, I can tell you, with the high school air conditioning, it took two years for that to get done, and I was getting questioned routinely, you know, where is the money that we approve for the air conditioning? And I would explain, almost routinely, that it takes X amount of time for the projects to be approved, then we've gotta bid them out, then we've gotta get all the work, the work orders in place. It does take quite a bit of time, and the work got done right, and we actually saved some money in certain places, but there is a timeframe along which these projects would have to be state-approved, it can take weeks and weeks and weeks, and then the in-house processes can take some time after that. But if we waited two years for a roof replacement, that roof, Southdown roof, it may not be, I think Jefferson was next, then Southdown, that roof may not be replaced for four years. And again, can we piece it together for that time period? Yeah, we can, but if those prices are gonna go up and this money is available for that use, and I think that, if there is a concern that I have on my mind, it would be putting a large number forward attached to the capital proposition, and there's, it has to be explained accurately, this money is there for no other purpose. We cannot take this money, put it back into the general fund for program use, it is specifically there for capital project work, and if it is not used now, or let's say the voters didn't approve the capital proposition, that money would just sit in that capital reserve for future use. It can't be used for any other reason. Or purpose.
Before we keep talking, should we do a motion?
Yeah.
So can I get a motion to approve the capital proposition? Let's see.
The version that's attached is last, is last week's.
So to amend.
So, to amend, to include, if you want to start with four and then discuss it from there, these four projects and discuss it from there.
So we get a motion to approve these, the potential to include these four projects in the capital reserve plan?
Motion.
Barry and Jen as a second, all in favor, not in favor, sorry.
Now.
That's what happens in the trial meetings.
So, so I said last week, when we were having this initial conversation, that...
Okay, 'cause I don't know if the lines that... What's that?
What?
I don't know if the projector is too, I don't know if he wants me to turn it off.
So almost people can hear me from back here, I'm pretty loud. Hear me, right?
Things like, all of these projects, as far as I'm concerned, are things that we are, we are maintaining buildings that are, in some cases, 60 years old, and doing a really great job of it, but at some point, as I said last week, we really have to consider, you know, we're not tearing down buildings and rebuilding state-of-the-art buildings, we have to do what I think is prudent in terms of making sure that our buildings are well-maintained and safe, you know? The other piece of my brain was, what if something went wrong? I'm not saying it would, but with one of these roofs and we didn't approve these projects, you know, like, I just, I think that that's a really valid, important point, and I was in favor last week of including more, especially the roofs, into this capital proposition. Historically in our district, we have done a very good job of informing the public about how this works, in terms of the money that is being spent out of capital reserve, that it doesn't affect their tax, their taxes that year, that this is money that's only for, so I think we can continue to do that, and I also think that we have to talk about that investing in these buildings is necessary, it's not, it's not for fun.
It's not frivolous.
It's not frivolous, yeah.
The money is in an interest-bearing account, I will tell you that the interest on the monies in these accounts will be nowhere near the amount, the difference between the Washington roof price and the Flower Hill roof price, and that's, that's what hit me, and unfortunately it hit me after the fact, and I figured, like I said, it was worth this conversation at the very least.
Just one more comment and then I'm done, but, you know, there was, not long ago, a lot of criticism, and I'm not saying it was directed at us, but from Albany about districts that hold on to reserves and don't use them. And so here we have an opportunity to show our community that, and I understand that the flip side, that then we'll have spent down these capital reserves, but these are all necessary, important projects, so I'm absolutely in favor.
This is what the money is, this is what the money is there for. It's there for this purpose. And I'll indicate, you haven't seen it yet, because it's in this week's update, but our Moody's report just came in, and again, we have the highest rating that a school district can have because of our financial position, but most importantly, because of the negligible debt levels that we have arrived at here and now. So what we are doing here is talking about using reserve funds at absolutely no cost to the taxpayer whatsoever for, and these are not, these are not small projects, these are projects that really are part of the infrastructure of these buildings, and Emily mentioned, they're 50, 60 years old. These are things that are gonna have to be done either now or later, and is later going to be less financially prudent because the prices are going up.
And I think, you know, Emily's point was good in that we've done a good job of communicating how it all works. I think this one would be a little bit different, where you have to focus on the reasoning behind it with, with the delays and how long things take, and rather than a roof repair that could potentially take a year to two or maybe more, if we, if we wait another year or two to put it on as a proposal, then you could be talking four, five, six years. So I think communicating how the timeframe works when it's out of our hands, and the fact that, like we were saying, it's not like this money is just gonna be swept out of the account all at once.
If these items were included, it would start the clock ticking upon approval. If they're not in the proposition, that's not an option.
And what would happen if it wasn't approved? Then is there no capital money that could be spent for that whole year?
If, if the voters did not approve, we would not be able to initiate the project processes.
No, and so there would be no project.
That's correct.
So I think that's...
And the money would go back into the reserve fund for future consideration. So it's not as if this money is not going back to the general fund, it's not being returned to the taxpayers, it, by law, it has to stay in that, in those building improvement funds.
And no work would get done.
Correct.
And I think that's important to, you know, we talk about what happens if the regular budget fails, we don't talk about what happens if that doesn't, so that might be...
And again, that may be one of the concerns, because the number would be higher than it has been, certainly in the past seven years, we're typically falling somewhere between 1.5 to 3 and change million, and now we'd be, and again, this is not a list that has to be considered together as a composite, you can look at it item by item, but I go back to, these are projects that are going to need to be done. They need to be done now. If a roof, if there was a problem with a roof, we could certainly patch it, that's an expense on top of the replacement, that would be added to whatever costs we're incurring at this point.
I have two, I have two questions. My first one is, if we decided to approve these two roofs for the proposition, what would, is there any, what would the chances be, or what would happen if a different roof catastrophically failed?
Well, we've prioritized these roofs, and not all of them need the same level of replacement, so anything can happen at any time, and they're, obviously, we have insurance monies in the case of a catastrophic event, so that, that answers at least a portion of that. And if they were a piece, we've had issues with sections of the high school roof, and we've patched it. We've patched it in, I'm gonna say, a relatively inexpensive manner, and some of those patches have lasted...
I lied, I have more than two questions.
Yep.
And then what's left after this? So this would be the primaries would be finished, if, right?
Which roofs are left? Only the high school.
Just the high school, with that second eight million there.
Now, you can look at the five-year capital plan.
I'm saying not this one, not that one.
This was a question that just came up in passing before, what's left on that capital plan? Well, there's...
I just meant roofs, I just meant for roofs.
A roof, yeah.
Just the high school.
Just the high school.
Okay.
And the high school would be done in sections, it's not gonna be done all at once.
Okay. And then, I don't know that this is a good idea, but I just want to ask if it's ever done, is it, is there always only one capital proposition on the ballot?
I was gonna say, could we split it up?
I don't know, yeah, there's pros and cons definitely to that idea, but I don't know if...
You could break it up into five capital propositions, but I don't know if that's gonna solve the problem, I mean, adding them together, separating...
More options to say no.
I just meant, because then you won't end up with zero if people balked at, what did you say, the total?
I said it just gets more options to say no.
Yeah, I think it convolutes the manner, it convolutes the manner in which we're doing this. In the proposition, each project is outlined specifically, and there really is, for the most part, something that every building needs here, and in the overall scheme of things, I think if you look at it as a composite and present it as if, again, Emily mentioned, 60-year-old buildings, there are things that, we've done a good job picking the things that need to be replaced or addressed, now you're talking about, and we knew this was gonna happen, the roofs are, are major.
Right. I guess I just, yeah, I just worry, I don't want to end up with zero.
Could happen even with a 2.786 million proposition, and if people understand it...
Incrementally, every dollar, there's another voter that would say no. You know, I don't...
It could be, and that could be the thought behind, listen, my, my head was stuck in, well, we're usually at about 2.5, 3 million every year, and I don't want to fall back into, well, we've always done it that way, so let's continue, well, here is some valid reasons to consider going up a little higher, and it would require an explanation, and I think the people that understand it, understand it well, and I would get some help with this, obviously, I'll, I'll do my circuit and spread it as best I can, we're talking about something, as you know, that will not cost anybody anything.
Right, no, I totally, I totally do know that. Yeah, I guess, so with that, like, with that in mind, I guess, just thinking about explaining it to the voters and all of that, I think my preference would be to include the roofs, present first priority, you know, and then to talk about, we can talk about the others, but I'm just saying, I think just numbers-wise, and, you know...
The other thing about breaking it up could lead to a thought that it's a little bit less than transparent, put it all out there.
What do you mean?
Well, just if, if you're trying to break it up, and you're trying to break it up just for the sake of putting two lower numbers out there instead of one combined number...
Oh, see, I was thinking of as giving the voters a choice, I think that's giving the voters a choice, that's the way I was...
There's, I mean, the roofs are different in their own right, they're more expensive.
Thinking in the ramifications, all right, so the primary, well, I guess they're all primaries, we have that much going for it, but, you know...
I'll go back to this, too.
Jefferson and Southdown parents are ganging up against the Flower Hill parents, saying, no, we want ours, not yours.
I was thinking of it more like, I know that some neighboring districts had done bonds where, like, you had, you couldn't get the second bond approved if the first one didn't fly, so I was thinking, like, would it be that the capital...
And I will tell you, what they've typically done there is not like this, they've typically put a collection of things in one bond, and they may put the athletic items in a separate bond, because there are, that's where the competing interests sometimes, sometimes are at odds with each other. Here we are talking about needed building improvements, you know, however you slice it, yeah, there's some smaller things, there's some larger things, obviously the roofs are expensive pieces of this, security vestibules at this point, nobody, I don't think anybody would argue those, and the other things we're, we're putting on the list here are things that are needed.
Right.
Tile in itself is not that expensive, the abatement process adds cost to that.
Right.
So I, I'm gonna go back to a concern I had outside of this last week, which was Woodhall and the paving, and my concern still at Woodhall is, we're only talking about paving the existing lot, but we still have a lot of people that park in dirt every day, and my concern would be addressing that as an addition, and I know that, George, you said that that's really gonna bump the price up, because obviously you need to put new found, you know, under, under, I don't know what it's called, gravel and everything else, but...
We can do, you know, any head ornament, you can set a price for it, and you make a decision out of it.
Okay.
You can do a head ornament, split that 705, if that came in the 100, boom, you do 600 of them, you might get rid of it all.
But you know what I mean, right, as far as that parking lot goes?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not pretty sometimes, especially on rainy days.
Yeah, the bad part, that's gravel.
At events like the Woodhull moving up exercises, you have people parking.
Oh, it's annoying, huh?
I mean, if they could drive down the steps to the Woodhull field, they would do so.
And we do a fourth grade class coming into.
Yep.
So, you know, it's another reason to consider doing something in that area with that addition. Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying that, that, that's my one concern on, on all the projects, out of all the projects is that one, and making sure that that's done to accommodate some of that. Anybody else have?
I've, I've got a few questions. We have a five-year plan.
We do.
And we've picked, I'm assuming, these projects as the paramount projects that need to be addressed, and we're kind of putting our five-year plan to sleep. What are we doing with that?
No, we're not putting it to sleep, but, you know, again, these are items on the five-year plan, so what we're doing is prioritizing. So whether we included the Southown roof now, or included it next year, it's still an item on that plan that's going to hang on to a high priority. So it's just a matter of when we are allocating the money towards it. Is it going to be now? Is it, I mean, is it going to be next year? Is it going to be the year after that?
Okay, and then if we're spending about 7.1, our reimbursement rate, you're getting about 2.7 back, can we commit some of that 2.7 to another roof as a general fund and not wait?
For the capital reserve?
We, we can, but when that aid comes in, it's, it usually is amortized, it's not coming back to us all at once, so it doesn't work as if we're getting that 37, 38% back in, in one package. So it doesn't, doesn't quite lend itself to doing this from the general fund.
Gotcha.
We'd have to replenish from other sources.
How long does it take for us to get back that 2.7?
Ten years.
Ten?
Ten years, wow. Do we get it back with interest?
We get 1.7 a day. But then don't we have to ask ourselves, what are we saving this money for? I mean, that's what this money is for.
Well, you know, like I said, what, what hit me the most, and, you know, I'm listening, and I'm, I'm listening to myself, and I'm thinking, and this is why I, I reached out to Tom, just to plant the seed to start, and then move to the board from there, if we're talking about between this year and next year, a roof going from 1.5 or 1.56 to 1.75, what are we doing? So that, and that's what happened with, I mean, Washington and Flower Hill have the same roof, and one of them is going to cost us another.
So we're back here because we think that.
Two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
The roof replacement rates have gone up. Do we have any reason why that's occurred?
It's probably aligned with the, with the cost of, of oil.
They say it's with the oil, but then it'll let it run. You know, if you do three roofs, you want to get any more price?
That was my next question.
And I will tell you that one of the things, and this was just, this just came up, cooperative bidding, looking at an opportunity that may be available to help with the pricing, Suffolk Share, where we can, doing three roofs at the same time with the county cooperative bid, it may bring that price down a little bit, and that, that, that money would be put back into the reserve if we didn't need it.
How long does it take to replace roofs? I don't know the plural, so roofs or roofs?
I keep getting roofs or roofs.
Or roofs.
About two months.
Two months.
That's what the summer is for, yep. It's tough to run the school year with kids in the building and no roof. I'm just, just throwing it out there.
But they can wear hard hats. Do you have enough money in the budget for hard hats?
All right, so let's say, we say, all right, let's go for three roofs. Now, I've heard you say several times, these are big jobs. Obviously, they are, they take two months. We would want to do this as expediently as possible, because if the prices are going up, and we deem this as a multi-year trend, that is why we'd be making this decision. So we would try to process these as quickly as we can. So I'm going to be naive and assume that if we put three projects in together that go in at the same time, they could be processed as one and all be approved as one. And naive, because I know we're talking about the state, and logic doesn't always apply. However, if that's the case, then we get three roofs approved at once. One roof is a big project. How are we going to do three in a summer without George going to the looney bin?
George is going to go looney bin.
And, and.
This is, this, this, no.
It was the Washington roof, it was an emergency project.
I, I make light of it, but the reality is, we need to make sure.
I imagine we could do the same with.
Fighting off as much as we can chew and not more. And I understand that one roof is a big job. We're really talking about potentially trying to do three in a summer. Is that prudent, is my question?
We can handle it. I, I don't have any issues with it. Between myself and architects, they go out and they're trying to also, we can get it done. You know, let's try to get the best we can with the dollars we can spend.
We'd be paying three times the labor, obviously.
It would just be, you know, camps would have to be moved around again.
And who knows, maybe, you know, we've had times where, once we've completed a project, they came in less than what we initially thought we were expecting.
And that may, that may happen by doing what Bill is saying, by putting those three roofs together and working through a cooperative bidding process.
Yes, so the point is that, with the materials and everything, that whoever we end up contracting with to do this, they may find for the volume of materials and labor, et cetera, that we in, in, at the end actually recognize, you know.
We may come in under cost.
So.
Can I, I'm going to just add my two cents here. I, I will say.
Two cents to 1.56 million?
One is that since I started on the Board of Education seven years ago, we've been talking about replacing the roofs because they were no good, and we were concerned. So I, seven years later, doesn't seem like, or, I think it's in due time, I think it's time that we do it, and I don't want to wait for some kind of disastrous roof occurrence.
Yeah, and I don't think we're waiting for a disaster. Like I said, if something happened, there are ways that we can do what we need to do to temporarily fix, but why spend the money on Band-Aids if this is an option, and this is exactly why the money is there, as determined by the taxpayers? Leaving it there, sitting there doing nothing is, is really helping no one.
Well, that's the other thing I was going to add, is that if you look at this through a purely fiscal lens, I think that speaks to doing them, putting them all together and doing them as soon as possible, because it's only going to cost us more money if we drag them out over the years. Like, I can't imagine if you do a roof every couple of years, how much it would cost us eight years down the road. You know, I think that, I mean, feasibly, the cost is going to be a lot more. So I think, truthfully, although we're putting up.
Things fluctuate, it, it could go up, it could go down.
I think, I think it's fiscally prudent to be thinking about the fact that most likely, yeah, its cost could go up and they could go down, but truthfully, most likely, it's they're going up. So I think it makes the most sense fiscally if we have the money and we can communicate, as everybody's been saying, to the community that this is money that's allocated for just this kind of thing. I think it makes.
And honestly, if the price goes down between now and a year, two years, when the, when the projects are approved, the price is going down, and we're not locked into the number that's on the screen.
I think it's going to require a little bit, I mean, we always do, I think, a good job of communicating budget issues each year, but I think this year, we're really going to have to focus on this in terms of not that we are asking to, we're not asking anybody for money, we're asking to release money that's already there.
It's in the account?
That we have to continually drive that piece home, that it's not going to impact their taxes this year, that this is money that is there for this purpose. So it might require a flyer, it might require, you know, a little extra PR effort on our part to make sure it's communicated correctly.
Agreed.
I have one question, that might be a stupid question, but Tom's point about the, possibly doing the additional piece to the Woodhull parking lot, if we were going to do that, would it make sense to take something somewhat inexpensive out, like the Woodhull tile replacement?
No.
You can't, you have to, because otherwise, the parking lot's site work and you don't get aid. We have to keep the Woodhull tile connected to the parking lot.
Well, okay, so what if it was something else?
You can take something else out, but those two need to stay together.
Because now we're, now we just talked about.
But I, I also think that if.
If George does what he does, and, and you can correct me if I'm wrong here, if he does
what he does, and the price is not exactly what it is there, but can be handled from the reserve and is deemed immaterial, it's not going to impact. You're, you're, the voters will be approving, repair, repave, parking lot and curb, so it would be inclusive unless it was a massive expense beyond.
Okay, that, that's what I didn't know, like, you know, how much was it in, in significant increase?
How about the Finley, I mean, because I do agree, we're, we're talking about adding a lot of things, I think we should reexamine the list just to make sure that there isn't anything we should be subtracting, given that, you know, we are talking even a little bit of additional money for the parking lot. Like, I know we talked about the LGI tile, and I know for sure that it needs to be done, I have kitted Finley, but could that be put off for one more year and take that amount of money out? I mean, I know it's not a huge amount, but.
We're, we're going to want to do it anyway at some point, and it is the premier room in that building, and right.
No, that, that's a big chunk, like, I don't think adding on that section to the Woodhull parking lot.
To be, to be honest with you, we initially, we initially had that as one of the high priority projects on, on the list last week, and we mixed and matched a little bit.
But I know that George had talked about the fact that he had just recently, within the last year, done something that could kind of buy us some time in there, so, I mean, just as a.
Put carpet in. That's, you know, it's, it would last a year, it would last two years, but again, why not? Who knows what kind of patching or abatement's going to have to be done in the interim? If it's there and you'd be willing to consider it, why not include it?
So in theory, next year, when that board is making a decision about budget, there might not be any capital project on them.
Well, there, or considerably less, but again, these projects will no longer be on the list, so these projects, do them now, do them later. You know, I don't think that's the issue, the issue may be where.
Right, it's not like next year, we're going to be going back and say, okay, guess what, we want to release millions and millions of dollars from the reserve. Again, this is one, a one-time thing to cover some significant.
We, we won't have.
To get the ball rolling.
And because we have, because we haven't done something like this in the past, we have the money to do this once, and this would be it. Next year, it would have to be a, a much more scaled-down proposition, if there is one at all. And it also depends, and, and as we discussed last week, I don't imagine that there's going to be a great deal of replenishment. I mean, there'll, there's always something, but not, we're not talking millions.
On a different note, when roofs are replaced, what's the average lifespan of a roof? Like, so it's about 25 years? So literally, once these are done, 25 years down the road, we're, we're cut.
You can buy a roof, I want to get about four years out of it, and then I'll probably switch it and just close it, you won't get five, you'll get four years out of it.
Out of forty years out of a Vona roof.
And if you look at the requirements, I don't see four years out of it.
Right.
What's the next roof you would see us replacing?
After these?
Yeah.
High school?
High school.
In pieces?
And then all we would have to replace that is 1.1, maybe we add two to it this year, we'd be at 3.1, the following year, maybe another two to three, we're at 7.1, we're still not there in three years.
Well, first of all, you can't do that whole roof in one summer.
Right.
So that would have to be done in pieces, and we don't have costs on the table for that, but, you know, we would, I, I imagine in two years, we'd be able to consider a piece of it if that were the priority at the time.
And if all we have in our reserves after this is 1.1, is there anything that we need to be careful with on our five-year plan that we maybe cut short with only having 1.1 in our capital reserves?
You know, again, if, if we're prioritizing at this point and picking these projects to put on the table now, I'm going to say that the answer is, unless something happened that we're not anticipating, which is always possible, and hence, there's a reason to leave something in there, but not 1.1 million worth, I don't think there's anything that's that expensive outside of another roof. So I think this is, this is as responsible as we can get with this.
No issues with any boilers or anything like that? We're, we're okay?
Except for what's on there already.
Right, okay.
And again, if they were, Christina asked a question before, if there were something catastrophic that happened, that's why we have insurance also. So it's not, that would cover something like that.
If insurance covers it, right.
Tom, what's adding to 7.1?
Can I ask a question about the trailers at Woodhull? Status of them, health, longevity, and our continued need for them?
Well, go back a couple of years, six years maybe, we bought them, so they're ours. You know, they're structurally intact, I don't, I don't think there's, and at this point, it looks like classrooms, it's going to be used for office space, not as, as classrooms. So that's the plan for next year, once the transition is done.
All music is going to move back?
Yes. Certain offices are going to be moved into the annex to keep them together.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, so does everybody feel, I mean, you asked me, so I kind of go, I came up with the total, and I don't know if you guys have it, but if we did all of these projects, 7.151 million.
Is that right? And we have what?
I should have put that total on here.
We have 8.347550. So I guess the.
You can't hear?
The last number was 8.347550.
Is what's in there now.
Is what's in there now.
Kathy said you have to talk right into these mics, yeah, so people.
Okay, sorry. Which leave a reserve balance technically of 1.16990, if I think my math is correct.
So 4365 plus 2786.
What's that?
Plus what?
The total here is 4365 plus the 2786 on this slide.
Right, 7.15.
7.15.
And what's the history of this capital reserve fund? Has it ever gone down to 1.1? Have we ever seen it go there?
No, not in my time.
Okay.
But we've never looked at doing something like this before. We've, we've kind of been in the consistent pattern of looking at anywhere from 1.5 to 3 million in projects and replenishing much of it. This would be a, a different approach. And it would be lauded by the state controller. I mean, I throw that in there as well. This is money that's there for this purpose.
Say that again?
This would be lauded by the state controller. He would very much appreciate the fact that this is why that money is there, and we are using it, we're not waiting on it.
Well, and to the point of where there's some criticism that districts hold on to too much money.
You know, we haven't, we've, you know, going back to this slide here, there are a couple of years, 1213 and 1617, where a higher percentage came in than out. Those are the years where new reserve funds were established. There was fund balance in 2011, 12 that was not anticipated, which is why that, that in is much higher than the out there, and again, it's relative based on the scale. But this would be a year where the darker bar would be much higher than the lighter bar, and there's, you know, in my mind, there's nothing wrong with that. That's what that money, again, that's what that money is there for.
I also can't think of a time, I mean, granted, it, I, I don't remember every single capital proposition since I've been on the board, but in 12 years, I don't think a single capital proposition ever went down. Not to say that it can't, and that this isn't different.
Yes, one went down.
A capital proposition?
Yeah, adding classrooms to Woodhull, it was all about timing.
Yeah, well.
Oh, but that was in the context of a very different time.
It was all about timing.
It, in the past, in the past seven years, it hasn't, when we're just looking at it from a pure project perspective, it's always, actually, we've had 80% plus budget passing rates and even higher with the capital reserve proposition. So taking out the peripheral factors, you know, again, if it's explained correctly and people understand it, you know, this is, this, this is the way they want us to use, our, our voting taxpayers should want us to use the money for, for this purpose and in this way.
And like I said, we've just never discussed about a proposition not, you know, going down. I think this would be a good time to talk about, you know, what, what that means too, if that doesn't get approved.
The, the only thing that scares me is that I'd rather purchase because there's a Ted, the only thing that scares me is that I'd rather purchase because there's a need, not because there's, the price is going to go up. Because to me, the worst time to buy anything is when the price is high, and that's what we're doing. We're scaring ourselves into saying, "Well, the price is high. It just got, it went up higher from last year." I don't like buying things when they're expensive. I like buying things when they're cheap, and that's what we're doing. Again, you know, I understand we need it, and we've been needing this thing for the last seven years. But I don't particularly like that propaganda that that's high and why we're gonna do this. I'd rather be the need-
Propaganda.
Propaganda.
No, but you know what I'm saying? It's the-
It's one factor.
Right.
It's one factor. And to be honest with you, I don't see the prices coming down. Add that to the fact, is we, these are not, these are not luxury projects. Replacing a roof is not a particularly sexy thing. It's something that needs to be done.
And I think the answer to that is, is this a temporary increase or the beginning of an extended economic expansion?
It's temporary.
Where all, everything is going to get more expensive because people are gonna have more money, and you can charge more, you know? In the economic expansion, things actually cost more because people have more money. And so, I guess that's really, if we're doing this, it's because we're betting on a continued economic expansion. Because I agree with you. If I think it's a short-term thing, I'd say, "You're chasing your tail, and you're the guy who's buying high and selling low," and we don't wanna do that.
But if we waited, if we waited for that downturn, that didn't happen for three or four years, now we have to wait five or six years to do projects. These projects can't wait that long.
And also, you're not gonna miss the downturn. If the downturn happens, you haven't bought at these prices.
It's hard to time a market at any time.
No, but I'm saying, you're just approving the purchase. You can, if you see it trend down, you can still wait for the price to go down a little bit.
We're budgeting for it, that doesn't mean that's what it's gonna cost us.
Can we hold if we see it coming down, or do we have to?
I think once the voters approve, we've gotta start moving. We've gotta send that project up to SED.
No, but once SED approves it, how long do you have to do the project? It depends on the time.
There is a, I mean, there is a timeframe through which a report of substantial completion has to be submitted. There is a timeframe that has to be followed, and extensions can be filed for as well, if there is something that goes wrong. But I don't think we could sit on a project per se and not move forward with it. But again, the numbers that you see on the screen here, these are at today's prices. So, a year from now, if a project is approved, and we go out to bid, and we realize-
It's lower, we realize-
Cost share, cooperative bidding, there could be $200,000 cut from that number that you see there. So, you know, that's one of the things, I don't think it's gonna come down that quickly, if it does come down at all. I think you're gonna see a slight uptick before then, because these prices have been, you know, there's some projecting that's been done here. But it's also a matter of, we need to do these projects. I mean, these are things that-
And also, I think when you group them together, we've run a greater, you know, we have the potential to save money-
Economies of scale, cost efficiencies.
For more than one job at a time. I mean, anytime you group stuff together like that, you know, you do, it gives you more flexibility to do some negotiating.
We want our buildings to be in the best condition possible, and that's really what it comes down to here. And we wanna do it at the best possible price.
And all of those schools deserve it equally. It should, you know, it should just be done.
Yeah, and this is not, let's give every school something. It happens to work out for the most part that way, but we're looking at what's needed. So, you know, if you look back at our past propositions, there were other buildings that got things that, you know, maybe the high school got something that primaries didn't get, and now it's time to replace their roofs.
Yeah, and I don't think you wanna look at it as-
That's not the same.
Saying it like, "Let's give-"
These are not luxuries. These are necessities.
Because then it makes it sound like we're just trying to come up with something.
No, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that they all need roofs. So, you know, that's, I'm just saying, they all need roofs. Maybe some might be a little bit worse or a little bit better, but-
No, and the point is, if we did not do the Jefferson roof at this point, and something went wrong, we could, we could patch it, but there are costs, general fund costs, that are going to have to be put out there. And these things start to add up, and you can tack those on to the total cost of roof replacement, even though it's not coming from the reserve, you know, whatever timeframe passes before approval here, we're gonna be adding that patchwork to the total.
Okay, so should I just ask the question?
Ask the question.
We have a motion in a second. Would everyone like to approve the, all of the other items for discussion and consideration on the capital and building improvement proposition?
I gotta tell ya, personally, I'm not comfortable with a 7 million number. I just, because seven's almost eight, and eight is all we have. And we do kinda have to sell this. Here's my thought. Can we get it just under seven, so that it's like 6.9? I was looking, if we take out your doors, Tom.
Uh-oh.
And the tile, the 36,000 for tile at Woodhull.
We can take that one out.
That goes with the curves.
Otherwise, you don't get state aid.
On the, on the parking lot.
Now, then you'd have to take the parking lot out, too.
In order to get the state aid on the 705,000, it has to be connected to the tile.
There has to be an internal and an external.
Wait, the boiler, the boiler doesn't count, doesn't qualify? The boiler is the 800,000 at Woodhull. That's like work.
Oh, that would, that would count.
Yeah, it counts. So, if we take those two out-
We wanna check that before we-
I'm talking to 6990.
Yeah.
600, 6,990,000. I'm more comfortable going to the community with that. I don't think either of those are critical as far as health and safety of the students. I just, I have, I'm concerned with making it look like we're blowing the whole thing.
Well, the only thing I can say about the tile, you're talking about the 36,000, the Woodhull bathroom tile replacement, there is an abatement that's built in there. The tiles are not new. Right now, they are not. If something went wrong, we'd have to abate them from general fund monies, so.
But 36,000 isn't a backbreaker there?
No.
Right, that's why. I don't see that as critical.
So, you're saying-
Does anyone else share my concerns about being able to put up a number that we are comfortable with and that the community will be comfortable with? That, that's my concern here.
I just don't know that the, you know, it's really 999, not 10 dollars is gonna fool anybody, and I don't know that the community really, that would be, that that would affect, would necessarily even know the number that's in the reserve account left, so I'm not sure.
And the tile definitely needs to be replaced.
No, 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 I'm saying that, does, how many people in the public are going to be paying attention to how much is left in the reserve fund? Will they really?
Well, we're gonna talk about it.
No, I don't think that's what Bill is saying. He's looking at, you know, the psychological impact of a 6.9 versus a 7.1 type.
I thought he was saying because we only have eight, I thought that's what he was saying.
Bill's saying it's more syllable.
It's a bit more sellable when it's under the-
It's like-
You're looking at-
You're the one that knows about the doors, so if you want to-
You're looking at seven as some psychological threshold.
I do know about the doors, and I'd hate to not have that done, and not just because it's not something, you know, a big deal, but there's a lot of cold air that comes into that building through those doors. There's a, you know, there's a heat issue that's caused by those doors, and energy savings that goes with that. So, I do have concern, and I've used those doors, they're in horrible condition from a safety perspective of anybody opening and closing them. You know, to me, at this point, if we're trying to, you know, put a bow on it and make it look nice for the community, I would much rather just get it all done and put it all out there, instead of trying to put a bow on it and make it look nice. 6.9, 7.1?
I agree.
It's a big number, either way you look at it.
And I also think we're underestimating our community. I think we go back to explaining exactly why we're doing this now, why the need is there, and I don't think-
I can't imagine anybody who understands this would not want it wholeheartedly. The key is, we have to help them understand it.
Which we've talked about tonight, we talked about last week. I'm not in favor of taking anything out. I think that we educate our community the way we always do. We answer questions, we explain, we're transparent in why there's a need for these, for each of these items, and we have confidence in their ability to discern that, you know, buildings that are 50 to 60 years old can't maintain themselves, and that they need work. We're not talking about putting in a second turf field.
No, and the fact that it's going to still take years to get all of this completed.
That's another issue. You know, like I said, there's nothing here that can't be patched, but that's an added, we're kind of going around in circles here, but that's an added expense.
Right.
So, why not?
All right, so let's, so let's make a decision here. Can I, we have a motion in a second. I'm just gonna go, all in favor of including all of the other items for discussion and consideration in the capital improvement proposition?
What are we, what are we doing here?
Unless somebody makes a motion to amend, like, we're voting to-
Put it all in at 7.151?
Right.
Yes.
That was what the, that was what the-
Well, I have a couple more questions then, before we get there, all right? We did this in a meeting. We all walked away, and then you went to bed and didn't sleep well, and came in and said, "Hold on."
I did.
Why didn't we get all this the first time, I guess is my question? What changed? Because you put up much less than 7 million the first time, and I need to understand what changed for you and/or George to-
No, this, honestly, it had nothing to do with George. Kathy and I had a conversation, really, it was initiated by me, and that communication I sent requesting the possibility of reconsideration. It came from me, just looking at the total amount that we had available, at the total amount of pri- and listen, I looked at it once, I looked at it twice, looked at it three times. I think what did hit me hardest at the last meeting was the difference in price between the two roofs that are identical, and also further conversation on the fact that these roofs are at the, very near the end of their lifespan. And I don't wanna continue to throw money into them if we can get the replacement into the proposition now and start the process moving. We may have to do that anyway, if some of these don't hit the books for three years. So, I will take that, that's something that I did not, I guess that that one number hit me harder than anything else, but upon further thought, it happens. I think my head was also in the 1.5 to 3 million annually that we've put into this proposition. And the question hit me, you know, what is it that's holding us up? This money is there for this reason and this reason only. It's not earning us anything sitting in the account. It's not doing anything productive for us.
And we had also talked about last time about, you know, the possibility of having to ask for a bond and to borrow money, possibly to do the high school roof, or to do the big projects that would be left that maybe we wouldn't have enough money to do. And I think I had commented that I wouldn't be comfortable with that until we've spent what we had and done as much as possible of it with what we do have.
Reserves.
Yeah.
Yeah.
With what we already have. Like, I wouldn't wanna go out and have to say, "Okay, well, this year, we're gonna do two roofs, maybe with the money, and now that it costs more, we have to get a bigger bond or ask for all at the same time." Do you know what I'm saying?
Also, this is not like it's emergency money, that if we needed to just, if we didn't put up the proposition with all these projects, and then we left more in reserve, it's not as if, if something happened next year and we needed money, we could just go grab it out of the reserve. We can't. The only way we can use this money is if the taxpayers vote to release it. So, why is it sitting there, and what are we worried about? I don't understand.
Just, you know, again, I think the only concern would be, and I think this is kind of where Bill's going, is we haven't put a capital proposition together with this higher number. You know, we've been, and I don't think we've, we've been at a point where we felt there were that many things as pressing. Once the roofs kicked in, I think we started thinking a little bit more along the lines of, "We really need to start expediting this." And listen, we cannot do 30 million dollars of capital projects with our existing reserve monies. As you saw on the slide, we have 8.3 and change million in the reserve funds. You know, I'm now looking at this as, whether we do it now or do it later, it still needs to be done. So, whether we leave 1.1 million or 5.2 million in that reserve account, we're still doing same projects, but possibly at different times, and at different price tag, with different price tags.
Emily, my concern is, it's easy for us to talk ourselves into doing something in this room, but we may be overlooking a factor in the general community that would have people think that what we decided was just foolish and not fully considered. And all I'm trying to do is make sure that we really do consider all of the angles, because again, it is easy to just sit here and just, "Oh, yeah, we're brilliant. Yeah, this is the best way to do it." Until you get out and you talk to, you know, I don't know, the owner of the hardware store, says, "Why the heck would you do that, blah, blah, blah?" And so, we get one shot. If we put it all in, in one proposition, it either all goes or it all fails. That's my concern. I just wanna understand, you know, that's my hesitancy here.
Yeah, that's-
And I think that was my initial hesitancy too, that, you know, the higher that number goes, if people don't understand it, or if people have some other idea in their minds.
We also do have a, we are struggling to come up with a, you know, a budget at the tax cap limit too. So, put a big number on a capital improvement, and, you know, let's say we do get to that point where we're at the, you know, tax cap limit, now you've got people that are coming in that may, to Bill's point, I think, look at this and go, "7.1 million, this much of an increase, what are you, crazy?" That just because they don't understand that-
No, it's a valid point.
As much as we can sit here at the table and talk into a microphone and say, "Oh, but it doesn't impact their tax di- their tax dollars," I would guarantee, 80% of the taxpayer public does not know that it doesn't impact their taxpaying dollars that it's coming from the reserve.
No impact on the levy, no impact on the rate.
The same person that's gonna vote against 7.1 is gonna vote against 6.8.
It's possible.
I mean, you know, it's not like you're taking from 7.1 down to three. If you're taking from 7.1 down to three, sure, I agree with you 100% Bill. But if you're talking 7.1 down to 6.8, I can't see that there's a voter that's gonna make that distinction between that, those two amounts.
Right, and that's why I asked the question, why did we go from 2.78 up to 7.1?
Right, but you were talking about getting rid of those two small things, right?
I'm looking at all options, Jen. I'm looking at all options, because this is something that we need to sell.
So, what did you think of my option when I talked about taking out the original 600 or 700,000 out of the LGI, because that would be a much bigger amount to bring it down to maybe a more palatable number?
Yeah, no, absolutely. Again, I'm not fixed on any of them. I'm looking at those that would be deemed more critical versus those that can be pushed off without real detriment to the students' safety or anything like that.
Well, if you did take that one out, the Finley one, that doesn't mean it never gets done. It could go on next year's.
It could, could go on a year after that. And again, what I did in-
You're gonna call numbers, you might as well take a bigger number than-
What I did in constructing this slide, the Woodhull lot and the Finley LGI were things that were considered last week that were ultimately taken out. Put those back up. And then looking at the balance and looking to leave us with some balance there, you know, with the need that we have to replace these roofs, and, you know, again, they should all be replaced now. Let's leave it at that, but can we get by for the next few years based on the priorities we've set? Yes, we can. But those two numbers made sense based on the balance that currently exists within the three accounts. So, this is, was not an all or nothing thing. It was, here it is to take a look at.
So, if we took out, but you were saying, nobody wants to take out the parking lot and curb set at Woodhull? Because if we took that out with the LGI for one year, that's 1.3 million that comes out. That definitely drops it down, right?
Mm-hmm.
My opinion, absolutely does. Starting with the Woodhull parking lot, again, as I go back to the fact that we're bringing fourth grade back into Woodhull, you have parents that are gonna be going in there. The parking lot is already challenging from a parking perspective. So, you know, it's one thing if you're gonna put it off a year, but if you're gonna put it off two more years, maybe three, you know, it's, I don't-
It's not even the additional piece that you're talking about. The lot itself could, you know, my driveway at home is not in great shape. I'm gonna let it ride for a little while. We can do it here as well. It's not in great shape. It's on this list because it's in need of an overhaul. You know, we did it at Jack Abrams a couple of years back. It makes a world of difference.
Does the cost or the complexity of a project affect the time that it gets approved?
No, but if we can, in certain circumstances, show the state that there is a pressing need for it, that could impact the timeframe. You saw last week, it's not in this presentation, but last week, there were a couple of things, including the Washington roof that was approved on an emergency basis. The boiler's in this building as well.
So, if we're gonna try to get to some consensus on this, instead of just throwing a fast vote out, I'd like to hear each of your individual thoughts of what you would like to see added to the proposition versus us just flat-out voting on everything. So, just take a minute, if you already know.
I'll jump in. I'm fine with what we have here. It's a big number. I'm not comfortable with 7.1, not comfortable with the percentage of our capital reserves. But if you're telling us there's a high need for this, and that there's safety issues, there's efficiency issues, to me, it makes sense. I'm not gonna vote for it because there's an increase in prices. I don't believe in that. I'm not gonna vote for it because I think that the money's sitting in reserves and we need to get rid of it. I'm a believer that if money's in reserve, money's in savings, it's a good place for it to be. I would vote on it simply because I think that you're telling us there's a high need for it, not for any of the other reasons.
Christine?
I think that all the projects should be included. My only hesitation is, is just trying to predict what the public will approve. Do I think all the projects need to be, should be done as quickly as possible if we have the money? I absolutely do. So, I'm just, my back and forth is just on whether everyone thinks, and I really think that's more of a group decision than an individual decision, of whether or not we think that it's what the public will be able to accept as an offer.
And what I will say, listen, all of these projects need to be done, and need to be done within a reasonably short timeframe. I do not want anybody at the table, or behind us, or behind me, to think that if we don't include the Southdown roof next year, it's going to collapse. It's not gonna happen, so.
No, but we should have good roofs. That's just the point.
Yeah, and listen, my point is, and I get the pricing thing, but, and I can speak to having, we've had to do this before, we've done patchwork, and we've done patchwork because we're patching a roof that is antiquated, it is depreciated, it is ready to be replaced. So, any patchwork that's done between now and then is going to increase the amount of money we spend on the items that you're looking at, whether it be filling in potholes in a parking lot, or carpeting an LGI, or doing small areas of abatement. You know, if we can get it all done, it's gonna be a much more cost-effective situation. But I do understand the concern that if it were up to us, and we could have the informed conversation here, if that's not the case, the voters have to approve this.
Barry, how do you feel?
I just, where my normal sense of comfort is not to deplete so much, that I keep going back to the fact that it's not depleting all at once and so much. And the fact that the reasoning, a good part of the reasoning behind this is because we've seen how long some, it can take for some projects to get approved, and we don't wanna be in a situation where we put it off to break up the amount of capital reserve that we spend over the course of a few years, and we're eight years down the line, and we're still talking about roofs that we need. So, I think this just gets the paperwork out there and done, and everything, you know, it's not gonna all come back at once of approval. So, we're gonna be waiting anyway. So, I'm, I'd be comfortable approving it.
And I'm gonna go down to Jen.
Okay, I'm comfortable with 7.1.
Okay, I'm comfortable with 7.1. If we were going to take out one thing, I would think, in my opinion, it would be the LGI tile and seat replacement. But if we're going to vote on the 7.1, I feel confident and ready to vote on it.
I'm going to go to Emily.
I mean, I guess my last question to the administration is, you know, are you prepared to package this and present it to the community in a way that will be more comprehensive and with a little bit more effort than what we've had to do in the past? Because I think that that's really important. I think the bottom line comes down to making decisions for maintenance of this, what is it? Maintenance of plan, technically, right? And, you know, and I brought this up last week. At some point, we're going to have to make those tough decisions, even though they may seem unpalatable and the concerns are legitimate. On the other hand, we're not trying to sneak something past anybody. We're saying, this money can only be used for these kinds of projects. So if you vote against it, it's not as if it's going to change anything in terms of your tax increase, in terms of anything else, except the money just sits there. And if we want to continue to maintain a school district that's, you know, robust and thriving in terms of our, maintenance of our buildings, then we have to do this. But I do think the onus is going to be more strongly on you and your team and everybody to communicate accurately what this really means. But do I think a difference between 7.1 or 6.9 is going to matter? No. If we're going to cut it and go down and take out a lot of projects, I'm not in favor of that. But if the rest of the board were that inclined, I wouldn't fight you on it. I just, I just don't know that if, if we're at this point and if Jim is saying, I really think this is what we need to do, he's telling us what's what we need to do.
There's not necessarily a right or wrong answer here. These are options that are being presented. You know, you've heard my statements regarding at least the reasoning behind where we are today versus last week. I cannot promise you what a voter is going to think when that voter walks into the, no more boots, slides that piece of paper through the machine. What I can tell you, and I think you'll trust me on, if it did come down to a full package here, I will do the, we will do the very best we can to market it, to explain it. I mean, it's something that should sell itself, but we will do everything we need to do within our power.
Well, I was comfortable where we ended up last time. That's what's everyone else when we walked out of the room.
Actually, I wasn't. I was the one that said, I think we should do all the roofs, and I think everybody has to think about the fact that ultimately, we may have to put up a bond or we may have to do something, but we're going to have to do this work. But I also said, I'm done after this season, so I'm not going to be here to deal with the ramifications of these decisions. So that's why I didn't push it very hard.
And this has nothing to do with the bond. This is, we do it now, we do it later.
No, I know, but I'm saying, I wrote the subject last week.
No, Emily was saying she was not comfortable with last week's vote, actually.
You know, but I wasn't going to fight it because I don't think it's my place to do that.
No, and there were a couple of comments that came my way about, you know, why didn't we?
I thought it was my turn. However, it's become clear that our fearless leader seems to be fairly fearlessly passionate about moving boldly forward here. Right?
Let's just leave it where it was.
And so with that said, I can't necessarily say I'm going to stand against it because I have a queasy feeling in my stomach. Because truthfully, that's what I'd be going on right now. And so I would really say that to date, when you've been passionate about something, it has always seemed to work out fairly well for us.
I'm not liking this.
And so as a good board member and board supporting the superintendent, I would support you in it.
I thank you, and I will just add that this is not supporting, I want to make this very clear. It's not, this is not about me. It's not supporting me. It's not supporting my team. It's not supporting the district administration. It's supporting these buildings. That's really what it comes down to.
This is all on you now.
Don't get, yeah, don't go back and unbutton it.
I'm trying to blame it on the brick and mortar.
Okay, so my take on this is very simple. The day after we had our meeting, Jim communicated with me regarding having some concerns about the roofs and having not included more of the roofs in the proposition. And as we banded back and forth, and I started thinking about it more thoroughly, again, as you said, Bill, we were comfortable last... Some of us were comfortable last week with that number. I, too, was comfortable with that number. But as we had more dialogue, I realized that, yeah, we have the money to do these projects. They are significant projects, and we really should, as a board, meet together and have exactly this conversation tonight. And I think it's good that we did. My position is, as well, I think at this point, we should vote. So I have a motion, and I have a second. I would like to propose modifying the capital proposition that we adopted on March 12 to include the roof replacement at Jefferson, the roof replacement at Southtown, the parking lot curb repair replacement at Woodhall, the LGI, and seat replacement at Finley, increasing the total of all projects to 7.151 million dollars. All in favor? That is everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim's just not going to sleep now, too. What's the budget level this year?
I don't sleep anyway.
It's okay, Mr. Polanski. We got your back. We got you.
Thank you. That takes us to our second public commentary of the evening. Same rules applies to the first public commentary. Anyone who likes to give the microphone may do so now. Okay, anybody have any closing comments they'd like to make? Motion to adjourn?
Motion.
And Barry is the second. All in favor, that's everybody. Okay.
Thanks for hanging in with us, everyone.
Well, you have, uh...
We've got to go. We're just going to stretch the...
We're being good. I'm starting to talk like a caveman.
We have a board meeting on Monday, right? Wasn't this a board meeting on Monday?